Mr. Mayor, we have seven members present, two absent. Councilmembers O'Brien and Butterfield were excused from the meeting.
All right. Leslie, are you taking this with John?
I can't. Yes.
Welcome, John. Always good to see you.
So tonight, we have John Hughesby from Minnesota District Transportation, District Eight, here to present an award for the Wilmar Y recognition project. So take it away.
Welcome to the Masto Regions America's Transportation Awards Press.
Stop that for a second. Yeah, good evening. I should first say why I'm here. As Leslie said, I'm here to present the city with a national award that was received for the Wilmar Y. And there's an organization called ASHTO. It's the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. It's got four regions, and every year, those four regions have a competition for the best projects in the country. I was at a conference here in September, August, it was a few months ago, and I was presented with the award. There were about 900 people there and a number of projects that were present. And when I picked up the award, I really, to a certain degree, almost felt awkward because this is truly a public-private partnership with the city, the county, the state, MINDOT, with the Economic Development Commission, and even with the Federal Highway Administration and the Federal Rail Administration. So I want to play just a video that they played at that ceremony, that award ceremony.
In the Quality of Life Community Development Medium Project Group, the winner is Minnesota Department of Transportation's Wilmar Rail Connector and Industrial Access Design/Build Project. This $50 million project delivers direct rail connection between various freight networks in Minnesota. Known locally as Wilmar Y, the venture ensures that fewer trains travel into the residential areas of Wilmar and allows for easier freight transport through the area. The project lessens rail traffic congestion at crossings, enhances safety, minimizes delays, improves air quality, and lowers train noise and greenhouse gas emissions. It also creates a hub for multimodal shipping, benefiting local and regional businesses for years to come. Catering to the growing population, the project incorporated a foundation for economic growth in Wilmar with the opportunity to expand businesses and bring new jobs to the community.
Well, he said we know locally as, we'll call it, the Wilmer Y. But it's really a pretty prestigious award. I don't particularly like that it's clear, so when they have the photographer take the picture, you can't tell that I'm holding anything. But I came back and I really felt that more organizations, the city included, needed to be recognized for our partnership with this. So I contacted ASHTO, and we got the exact same replica as what we have over on our display. And I presented the same to the city, or to the county board here recently. So MINDOT was the project manager for the project, but there was a lot of really key players. So with that, I'd just like to present this to you, Doug, and to the city council, to the city staff. Bruce Peterson and Sean Christensen, of course, were mostly the two involved, and both have moved on, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Wilmer Y.
Yeah.
John has been recognized by businesses and industries already, and we're getting some wonderful questioning industries that are looking at coming to town. And this has been a fantastic project and another star in Wilmer's best.
It really is, and I should, if you don't have, I should send Leslie and you, Mayor, the letter of support written by Aaron Backman of the EDC. And he talked about just what you said, the number of jobs that it's brought, the number of industries that are interested in the industrial park. It's very intentionally, of course, adjacent to the industrial park to have those opportunities for the multimodal, intermodal connections to different modes of freight movement. It's been amazing.
Yeah, it sure has. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
All right. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got two new faces here today, and it's exciting to have them here. And Leslie, go ahead and introduce them to.
Council, I'd like to introduce to you tonight our new planning director, Christopher Corbett, over here, and our city planner, Chris Frank. So we're very excited that they have joined us, and we are looking forward to all the projects that we have on their list to get accomplished, so go ahead.
Thank you, Administrator Valiant, and thank you for your willingness to share your institutional knowledge and your commitment to public service that is demonstrated from your career here. I'd also like to thank the Hiring Committee and the people here in the city of Wilmer who unbannounced to them, informally engaged with me since I moved here, and have shown me the utmost hospitality as well. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, the audience here, and those who are tuning in as well. As you just heard, good evening. I'm Christopher Corbett and the Director of Planning and Development at the city of Wilmer. I'm an urban planner by study and practice, graduating from the University of Michigan, and I will always, probably always, add that tidbit about being an urban planner by study and practice. Because my educational and professional experience have granted me a great understanding of how policies and regulations can impact the quality of life of the people. I also say it because my experience guide my decision-making to make sure that we are, that planning is elevating the quality of life for all in the future of Wilmer. So I was asked this question, what exactly is urban planning? And urban planning is the process of developing and designing areas to meet the needs of the community while striving to provide cities for the future. As director, I have three calibers of intentions, thus to support, to build, and to remove. The first, supporting, is supporting the planning and development staff and our processes that we have in place, and to make sure that change to any of those policies and procedures are done transparent and led through the staff. The second one is building. I'll love to continue to build long-lasting relationships that we already have and establish new ones across the city with locals and state government offices as well. And most importantly, to make sure that we are building relationships with our neighbors here throughout the city of Wilmer, to make sure that the future of planning is led by and for the people we serve, as well as making sure that planning is people-centered. This last one is to remove barriers to planning. So my goal and intention is to make planning more accessible to the general public. So I'm excited to start with the city, to be a part of the first in the state to offer broadband as a utility, to launch a comprehensive plan, and to work with developers, landlords, and residents to increase our housing options that are high-quality and that have longevity throughout our neighborhood. I look forward to working closely with you, city council, commissions and boards as well, because I understand and value the people here in Wilmer and know that planning is collaborative. I always live by this quote, it's an African proverb, and it goes like this, and I hope I don't butcher it. It is, "If you want to go fast, go along; if you want to go far, go together." And, Wilmer, I'd like to go with you. I'll open it up for any questions and answers.
I'm going to tell the council, I met with Chris and Christopher.
Yes.
And this morning, in one of the conference rooms at City Hall, and they were having a meeting with one of our tech support people named Chris. So I asked him, "What do you want to go by?" This is Christopher.
Yes.
That's Chris. So, welcome. We are excited to have you here. I asked you one time something to the effect of, I didn't say how long you're going to be here, but I got a comment from you that made me feel good, that you're going to be here for a while.
I'll be here a while, yes. And the reason being because we know that in planning, things don't happen within a year or two years. It takes time, and I'm addicted to accomplishments, so I would like to see a lot of the work that we are getting done with planning and development for the city implemented. So I'll be here.
Any council members want to... Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
I was on the Hiring Committee, and you did a great job there, so welcome. The only bad thing is you're a Michigan Wolverine.
Go Blue.
We're Gophers.
Yes.
We'll persuade you to become a Gopher fan eventually, so.
And we play shortly after the interview, but thanks for still saying yes to me, so. All right.
I remember when I was in college, there was a homecoming that we played the Wolverines, and the button was "Denn the Wolverines." All right, well, thank you, Christopher.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Welcome.
Chris, welcome.
I'll give a quick introduction, too, thank you. To touch on that, I'm not only a Gopher fan, but I was also born and grew up for a short amount of time before we moved back to Minnesota in Cleveland, so I'm also, grew up a Buckeyes fan. So I've already warned him that I'm going to give him quite a tough time. So I, my name is Chris Frank. I was, again, born in Cleveland, but my family's from here, and we moved back shortly after I was born. I grew up here, graduated class of 2004 from Wilmer High School. I was, am still, for a short amount of time here, attorney in town, and I have decided to try a different challenge, take a different path, and I'm very happy to this council, City Hall, Leslie and everyone else that was involved in my hiring process for giving me a chance to give my all here for the city planning. I guess the line I've been given is that I'm already invested in the city, I already live here, so I'm very eager and excited to get to work in helping to build Wilmer, especially right now, we seem to be entering this little bit of period of excitement here with the industrial park and all the new housing projects going up, so I just want to say thank you to the city for this opportunity, and I am invested, and I will work with Mr. Corbett to make his plan of moving forward together a reality. Thank you.
Anybody?
Anybody have questions for me?
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks, Chris. All right. The agenda, any additions or deletions?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Go ahead and vote.
I'll have to be a voice vote.
Councilmember Asmus?
Aye.
That motion carries six ayes, zero nays.
All right. Trudy, did you, did I step on you or...
Nope, I'm next.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of November 6th, city council work session minutes of November 13th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Meeting Minutes of November 13th, Charter Commission Minutes of October 24th, Charter Commission Draft Minutes of November 6th, a resolution consideration of designating polling places for elections 2024. For council's information, the 2024 city council meeting dates, the director reports for October of 2023, city finance report through October 31st, city investment report through September 30th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Financial Reports for September of 2023, consideration of charter commission members, legal service rates for 2024, and the accounts payable report November 1st through November 17th.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You got a motion and a second? Go ahead and vote.
I will have to be a voice vote again, my computer has decided to update.
Councilmember Asmus?
Aye.
That motion also carries six ayes, zero nays.
All right. I have to ask staff, we've got a number of people here that evidently want to speak to the council, and I've only got one person on the three-minute address.
Everybody else is for the public hearing.
Okay, all right. Do we have to do the G through N also right now? Or did we do that?
That's already.
I already did those, yeah. So we are on open forum.
There was, okay. All right, we're at the open forum, and we only have one person that wants to address us through the open forum, and that's Tony Morris. And Tony, welcome, thank you for coming, you have three minutes, and we're anxious to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor Reese, thank you, city council, and for the citizens that are here, thank you for listening to me and giving me this opportunity. I was honored this year to be the guest speaker for Jonathan Lindstrand's military display on Veterans Day at the Warm and Royal Downtown, and I made a declaration at the end of my speech that we, I will not rest until there's a permit for this display that gets collapsed down and then reopened up every year. I've been part of that for 25 years. I've been there with him, John, from the beginning, and so I put myself out there. Sorry, this is going in and out, can you hear me?
Aye.
Okay. I put myself out there, and I made that declaration, and I'm going to continue it through. I had met with one of the business owners, along with John and his son, Quentin, on Saturday. We had our first meeting on this topic, and I learned that years ago, different mayor, different city council members, that this has already been broached, and that they, it was brought forward by Ron McAdans and Mr. Gusselson and others, other veterans, and it kind of fizzled out. Why I am here is I'm making a public declaration to ask for help. So that's what I'm doing here, that's where the start is. We've, several of you know about this and kind of were involved with the old building downtown and what became of that, I want to revisit that, and I'm also doing it this way to make it public to not just you, but to the city. My name is Tony Morris, I'm in the phone book, my number's in the phone book under Tony Morris, so if you want to join us, we're going to make this happen, and I need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Come and see me after the meeting, okay? I got your email, I want to talk to you. All right. We have a public hearing, first of all, for Dunick Concrete LLC land sale, and Robert?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, thanks for allowing me to do this remotely tonight, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. This is a public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of about 13.67 acres of real property west of the city's industrial park to Dunick Concrete. The ordinance appears in your packet after the purchase agreement on page 78. There's also a summary of the ordinance, there's two actions needed tonight. One is to adopt the ordinance and assign it a number, the other is to publish by summary. I'll just note, the ordinance requires five votes, the summary will require six votes. The purchase agreement sets forth the terms and conditions of this proposed sale. It is referenced in the ordinance, the ordinance authorizes the sale consistent with the terms of the purchase agreement. The city council has previously approved the purchase agreement, so the two actions are really limited to the ordinance and the summary tonight. You previously received a detailed summary of the purchase agreement, which I won't repeat, but I will highlight some of the key terms. The purchase price is just above $123,000, as is the case with every sale of land in the industrial park or the vicinity, the sale is being recommended in order to facilitate a specific development project. In this case, it's the proposed development by Dunick of a ready-mixed concrete and storage facility on the premises. And as also the case with every sale of industrial land, there would be, in the purchase agreement, a reservation to the city of an option to repurchase the property in the event that construction on that project doesn't begin within a year of the closing date. There's also a temporary easement that the city would be reserving primarily for the benefit of MB Rail located further to the west to access Trot Avenue through this property and the location of the former runway at the old airport, and that's a temporary easement that would expire once the contemplated improvements to Highway 40 that were part of the MB Rail transaction would be completed. Beyond that, the purchase agreement is on the standard agreement with the standard terms and conditions that the city has negotiated for every sale of a lot in the industrial park. The sale would be subject to the buyer, Dunick, first having the opportunity to conduct whatever inspections or investigations of the site it would see fit. It would be through that period Dunick's ability to either decide to pursue the agreement and go to closing, as contemplated in the agreement, or during that period, they would have the ability to withdraw, and the sale of the property would be as-is, with no representations or warranties by the city. So with that, I would certainly welcome any questions from the council. This is a public hearing, so you'll need to see if there's anyone in the public that would like to address the council on this as well. But at the conclusion of that, the recommendation is that the city council adopt the ordinance authorizing the sale of property to Dunick Concrete and assign it a number, and then the second motion would be to approve the publication of the ordinance by summary.
All right, so we'll open up the... All right, so we'll open up the hearing for public comment. Anybody who wants to speak on this. Seeing no one, we need a motion to publish by summary.
I move to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that you close the hearing.
That's a good suggestion. All right, I'll close the hearing, bring it up to the council, and we need five affirmative votes. Carl's.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Again, we need five affirmative votes to pass.
That motion carries six eyes, zero nays.
Thank you. Now we have a motion for published by summary.
So moved.
Second. And that needs six affirmative votes.
The point of order question, I believe the Carl's motion was to publish by summary.
There was a second one.
This motion was to adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish.
That's what Carl said.
Publish. That is the formal motion for ordinances, and then the second motion being it's a longer ordinance, then we do a publish by summary.
I made the mistake, council member.
Okay.
And I said, looking for published by summary, but Carl made the motion for adopt the ordinance, assign a number, and publish.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we got the votes?
Yes, the motion to publish by summary also carries I, six eyes, zero nays.
Okay. The next is the 2024 Improvement Hearing. However, we have two council members that are not here tonight, so we're going to have to continue it on to another time. Jared?
Can certainly go through the presentation for the members of the public that are here?
Sure.
All right, good evening, Mayor Council. As Mayor indicated, this is the public hearing, the improvement public hearing for the 2024 construction projects. This slide ultimately identifies the city project numbers and streets, characterizing them by the category of the improvement, whether that be a reconstruction, an overlay, or a other type of city project. I have a map in this presentation that'll be more clear to understand than all these words, but ultimately, the projects identified for reconstruction, the preliminary engineering report, are 10th Street, 13th Street, Grace, Rice Avenue, 20th Street, and Second Avenue. So that's the reconstruction areas, overlay areas are spread throughout town and will be easily distinguished on the map. And then a couple of city projects, one being the Thompson Parking Lot and Ella Avenue Path Improvements Project, the 19th Avenue Path Improvement Project, which is the path that extends from 15th to 5th, and then Civic Center was, Civic Center Parking Lot was also reviewed as part of the preliminary engineering report. And then finally, there are some seal coat improvements that are identified for 2024. Project areas noted there on the screen, the light blue areas are the mill and overlay areas. The dark blue have been identified as reclaim and overlay throughout the planning process. The pink is the street and utility reconstruction, orange being the parking lot reconstruction, and red being the path. Yellow signifies the crack fill and seal coat, and the green areas are also county projects that are planned within the community in 2024. This is just a second map illustrating the same thing, different, different part of town. Let's see, the north-south green line is the county proposed improvements along County Road 41, the Eagle Ridge Drive area, Technology Drive, Transportation Road, Arena Drive area near the Civic Center. So the items, the existing conditions that were evaluated as part of the report included the utilities as well as the roadway, the sanitary sewer, existing conditions on the areas planned for reconstruction, the sanitary sewers, clay and concrete pipes, also block and brick manholes. Water main, in collaboration with Wilmer Municipal Utilities, we identified the piping ages and the materials consisting of both cast iron and asbestos cement pipes. Storm sewer, similar to the sanitary, clay and concrete pipes, brick and block mortar manholes, and then the streets, cracking, block-cracking potholes and settlements. So differentiating between the reconstruction and overlay areas, in the reconstruction area, what that ultimately refers to is a complete rebuilding of the pavement section, the complete removal of the concrete curb and gutter, and as contemplated in the report, sidewalk is being proposed to be replaced only where it currently exists, with the exception of one area that I'll get to in just a second. So the difference between reconstruct and overlay, the overlay would be a partial removal of the pavement, or in the case of a reclaim, the entire depth of the batuminous would be mixed in with the gravel underneath it, creating a new roadway base, and then in the overlays or the reclaim areas, spot curb and gutter repair and replacement is contemplated. Existing street widths throughout the project areas range from 40 feet to 30 feet, and I wanted to identify this slide because there's not a lot of street widths that are being proposed to be altered. However, just to draw your attention, the, the blue, or the light blue is the 40-foot width, 38-foot is the pink, 36 being orange, 32 in red, and finally, 30 feet in yellow. So the proposed street widths, a couple items. On the west end of Grace Avenue, the proposed street width there is 36 feet. As it exists today, it ranges between 38 and 36. 13th Street between Trot and Candy Ojai currently is proposed to be 38 feet in width, and the 13th between Candy Ojai and Wilmer is proposed to be 32. Ultimately, the, those are the existing street widths. Previously was contemplated about altering those, and through the analysis, that would have required the removal of additional trees and impacts on private property, so that's why the street widths are remaining as they, as they are. 30, 40 feet north of Candy Ojai is existing. It's proposed at 38. South of Candy Ojai, 32, proposed at 32. Sidewalk locations, this map ultimately shows where the existing sidewalks are, and you'll notice on this proposed sidewalk map, the only modification is that there's a piece of sidewalk proposed along Rice Avenue as part of the improvements for pedestrian connection to the school. So in the case of reconstructs, when a project is, is completed, there will be new sanitary sewer piping with services, manholes will be precast concrete to reduce the amount of infiltration into our wastewater system, water main currently proposed is between eight inches and 12 inches in diameter with new gate valves, hydrants and services, and then the storm sewer, concrete pipe, precast manholes, and new curb and gutter in the reconstruction areas. Overlay areas, this is just a map to illustrate those, those areas. I've mentioned them previously, but ultimately, starting kind of on the top of that map, the 7th Avenue, 8th Avenue, and 29th Street area, and then as you move further south, the city mill and overlay portions, and again, the counties in green, the city mill and overlay portions, and that 21st, 22nd, and 24th Avenue area. Then on the, on the eastern side, we've got Becker, 7th, 8th, 17th, 18th, 19th area. And then Eagle Ridge Drive area, Technology Drive area, and then the Transportation Road and Arena Drive are contemplated for the mill and overlay or the reclaim and overlay. Eagle Ridge Drive Storm Sewer is identified for reclaiming, or Eagle Ridge Drive area is identified for reclaim as part of the proposed improvement. There, we are aware of some drainage issues in that area that'll have to be further investigated during the design, there are some existing drainage areas that could be, or drainage problems that could be rectified as part of the improvement. Typical sections ultimately just showing the difference between mill and overlay and reclaim and overlay. Mill and overlay, approximately one and a half to two inches of the batuminous surface would be removed and replaced. The reclaim and overlay, again, the existing pavement would be ground up with the underlying aggregate base material and incorporated into a new road base with new pavement over the top of it. Parking lot and path improvement, Thompson Park and Ella Avenue Path Project ultimately consists of the reconstruction of that parking lot and reconstruction of the existing path in that area. 19th Avenue Path currently on 19th Avenue has sidewalks. There's a five-foot walk where this path is proposed to be replaced. You'll note that from 15th Avenue to First Street, the path is proposed on the south side of 19th Avenue. East of First Street, it is proposed on the ninth, or on the north side, and that's due to existing utilities and right-of-way availability. Civic Center Parking Lot Improvement, you'll notice two colors there. The orange is the existing parking area. The pink is an alternate that we've identified through discussions with staff as it relates to the new trailhead improvements and all of the other items, and parking needs at the facility. We split them up into two pieces for, for reference, and then I'll note the batuminous path that's identified along Transportation Road. Estimated project costs are broken down here. 10th Street Improvement Project is estimated at approximately $997,000. The 13th Grace and Rice at approximately 8.8 million. 20th Street Project, 659,000. The overlay improvements for the city portion of the overlays have been estimated at approximately 5.5 million. Thompson Park Parking Lot and Ella Path Improvements Projects estimated $139,400. The 19th Avenue Path Improvement Project is estimated at approximately 1.4 million, and then the Civic Center Parking Lot Project Base Bid, that's the existing parking area. The alternate A is the area that was noted in pink on the previous slide, and then the seal coating improvements estimated at approximately $409,000. For total estimated project cost for the projects identified in the preliminary engineering report of $20,996,700. Project Cost Summary, this ultimately shows where the costs are allocated in terms of street reconstruction. You can see that's approximately 5 million storm sewer, approximately 1.9 sanitary water main, and then the overlay components projects. Very similar breakdown, but breaking it out by the street, storm, and, and other utilities. And for the cost summary by project, this basically takes that previous slide and allocates the costs associated with each of those components to each of those projects that are identified. Anticipated funding sources for the improvements, assessments, state aid, the city receives state aid on an annual basis. Wilmer Municipal Utilities, as part of the report preparation process and the project plan process, Wilmer Municipal Utilities provided their input with their infrastructure and the infrastructure that, that needed to be replaced with respect to the condition of the streets. So that was a process that we went through during the planning, or during the report preparation. Of course, there's wastewater costs associated with sanitary sewer, local option sales tax funds associated with stormwater improvements, not the replacement of existing stormwater infrastructure, but the improvement to it, and then of course, city and state funds, and then active transportation funds. Those are the funds that were received as part of the 19th Avenue Path Improvement Project. The city was awarded a grant for that path project. Here's a breakdown of the projects and the costs associated with that. Active transportation, you'll note there, that 500,000 I referenced earlier, and the state aid, and then the estimated costs associated with water, wastewater, and the local option sales tax. Assessments, there's always a question during the improvement hearing, although we, we wanted to provide an estimated range of what we've been seeing these come in at the la, the last few years. So you'll note that street reconstruction estimated between $62 and $66 per foot, and some sanitary sewer, 15 to 18, sanitary sewer services, 800 to 840, water main, 18 to 24. There's two types of water service or categories for water services, one being residential, one being commercial. Difference there being commercial services are larger. Residential water services contemplated for the improvements are one inch in diameter. The commercial ones are larger than that. And then the storm sewer reconstruction estimated between 12 and 16, and then the mill and overlay components there range $60 to, $60 to $70 a foot. Project schedule, at the October 16th meeting, the preliminary engineering report was provided to council. Council passed a, or adopted a resolution calling for the public hearing this evening. On the 7th, we did conduct a, held an open house for residents, property owners to come and ask questions regarding the improvements. Today, we're at the public hearing, and then provided the project schedule, or the project moves forward, the anticipated schedule from there on has been identified for plan approval in February, bidding in March, contracts in April, and then construction starting in May with the assessment hearing, the last part of the 429 process in 2024, fall of 2024. So with that, Mayor Council, I'll answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, is a public hearing an opportunity for residents to also ask questions regarding the proposed improvements?
Jared, I didn't get it. The street reconstruction is 62 to what?
62 to 66.
62 to 66, and I got the storm and the overlay, but I didn't get the sanitary.
15 to 18.
Okay. Okay. Now, I've got a question on overlay. When we do overlay, how much do we take off? Do we go down into the bitminder, or is it just the wear course?
Yeah, ultimately, it depends on how much mix or bituminous exists in the existing roadway. But what we've done historically is anywhere between two, or inch and a half to two inches, depending on the underlying bituminous thickness. So that would be essentially removing the wear course, if you will.
Wear course is about the same.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Well, we'll open it up for the public. Anybody want to speak to this? Give your name and address.
My name is Josh Johnson, 1459 Grace Avenue Southwest. I was here last year and presented. I provided you guys with a handout, so I'm gonna kind of follow along with the same handout. The pictures I gave in the back are of my property in the front and the overarching canopy in the area. As we presented last year, I feel that removing these trees are going to be a significant impact, decreasing my property values and property values in the area. Last year, the council directed the engineer to minimize the impact of trees. Since then, the estimate from last year was 117 trees. It is now at 146 trees. Sanitary services haven't been located, so that number would be assumed to go up. As far as the, the stormwater, right now, we have a 1.7 million dollar improvement scheduled for that area. I'm just wondering if there's some future outlook for what's going on with it. The, the storm pipe itself, i- in my specific bend, there's a lot of flooding that takes place there. Right now, there's a storm pipe that goes over to Wilmer Avenue. There's a lot of surcharging that happens. We're now directing that over to Kennedy, which is already a pipe that's surcharging. So we're adding additional pipe and cost for what benefit? I don't know if there's some sort of retention ponds or something that's planned for the future, but something needs to change there. Project Scope, so I'm noticing that the project cost is going up significantly. From last year, what I've noticed is we removed the sidewalk that was going along Grace Avenue. As Jared mentioned earlier, there's a portion of Thirteenth Street that is staying the same width, whereas previously that was going to be a 38-foot wide section. So with the project costs in 2022, it was at 7,155,000. Today's price, we're at 8,806,000. We're up 1.6 million, 23%. Going into it a little bit further, engineering fees, so we can see from the cost estimate or the engineer's estimate that was provided in the Preliminary Engineer Report, we had 1.19 for engineering fees in '22. '23, we're up to 1.46. This project's supposed to have been designed already. It's reflecting the same 23% increase as the overall project. Reviewing the agenda that came out today, I also noticed that there is a project understanding. So I went and reviewed from what was happening last year to what is happening this year. In the construction services, so what was provided for last year was 238,730 dollars for construction services. So this is your RPR, your engineer working for change orders, reviewing submittals, that type of stuff. The same one, which you're gonna see later today, we're up to 693,630 dollars, three times the amount. Total engineering fees for the project, taking that from May 31st, 2022, 574,000. Later this meeting, we're gonna see a proposal for 807,400. And that does not include the preliminary engineering and the design fees that were already included. So my best guess is we're up to almost 1.1 million on this project. And just reviewing the schedule that's happening now, I would ask for the assessment hearing to be moved up as soon as possible. Seeing what happened this last year, I would respect a little more than a month to get my bill, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Can we ask our city engineer to respond to these?
Mayor Council, in terms of the trees, as Mr. Johnson indicated, the sanitary sewer services as part of the improvement, there may be a few more trees that need to be removed because if the sanitary sewer service or the water service is immediately adjacent to the tree, in some cases, we can dig around it, but that isn't always the case without the property owner's permission. So he's completely right that there could be more trees that need to be removed. One of the other topics that was brought up was relative to storm sewer. And again, he is correct that that system currently does surcharge. He doesn't have the luxury of the conversations that we've all had with council as part of the capital, the stormwater capital improvement plan. There is a plan for that area. It won't be completed as part of the project due to the project limits. However, there is a plan in place to improve the drainage, not only in that area, but throughout the, throughout that overall larger watershed. And so that's the, the storm, storm sewer piece. In terms of the project scope being reduced project costs, we have estimated the project costs associated with, with the projects based on the unit prices that we've received on previous projects. So I'm comfortable in those estimates. In terms of the, what can that be attributed to? Certainly, there's a, there's an inflation factor. However, the storm sewer in that area is quite extensive. It's, it's very large. And additional storm sewer infrastructure has been included in that project area to address some of the concerns noted and the future improvements for stormwater management in that watershed. And then in terms of any engineering fees and costs, the PER project included in this year's PER is based on the design that was previously completed when the project didn't move forward in 2023. And those are the estimated project costs based on the, the costs that we've received for projects in 2023, applied to that project for, for next year. Throughout the process, when that project was removed from 2023's construction schedule, agreements were amended to remove the construction pieces of that and the engineering fees associated with that. So on an overall basis, engineering fees are, are in the, I haven't done all the math quickly in my head as I was sitting there, but I, I would believe that they're in that 15% range. So anything else that?
Just one more question, and I know we had expressed a concern about the timeline last year too, and he was asking about that. Is there a way for us to add a date in there for a preliminary assessment notification or some, something to let people know what the estimate for the estimate is and before the hearing?
Yeah, we can work on, we can work on modifying the system. As Mr. Johnson indicated, that was a comment that we received from members of the public. And we can, we can provide preliminary estimates, just with the understanding that they're not final until the final assessment hearing, so we can do that.
What kind of timeframe can you do that?
I would definitely recommend after the bids are received.
Yes.
Yes.
And that will be in?
Currently, our schedule identified that in, accepting bids in April.
Okay. So can we add that on to the documentation?
We could get it done before the Fourth of July.
But do we need to add it on to make sure it happens, or do we need to make a motion to do that, or?
I think I have a very clear direction.
Thank you. Okay.
Carl?
Regarding the, the trees, Jared, are, are all those trees, did you get his handout? I don't know if you saw the pictures you gave us. All those trees coming down?
No.
On Grace?
No.
I, I will say, Josh, looking at the picture, almost all those trees, I think they're ash trees, or are they maple? So it's sad, but with ash borer, most of those trees are probably coming down sooner than later anyway. I agree, a mature tree, it's very sad to see a mature tree, and especially when it's canopy'd like that over the whole road go down. So hopefully, that's, that's minimal at this point, but like I said, with ash borer coming in, it's gonna be sooner than later probably on that, which is very sad.
Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what's the timeframe on the stormwater project for the future? And what is it gonna be? Is it over to Swanson Field, a holding pond, retention pond?
Yeah, so currently, if council recalls here a couple months ago, I believe it was, we did apply for a stormwater grant associated with planning and, and looking at what the ultimate thing is there, but you're right, there's going to be detention, whether that's a stormwater pond or underground storage or something. Ultimately, there's definitely a capacity issue within the system, and I don't think that's news to anybody due to the drainage problems that have been chronic in that area. But those would be two potential solutions for, for addressing that issue.
So we should find out if we get funding?
I would say within a few months.
This spring, then?
Yeah. And then that could be used to further implement the city's stormwater CIP.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have another question?
I will. We had asked to review the assessment policy. So from your estimate of dates, when do we need to review that assessment policy by?
I think that could definitely be done in the February, March timeframe.
Okay.
After the first of the year.
Okay, so do we need to add that on?
I don't think you need to add that as a motion.
Okay.
Staff has.
Planning to do that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to the council? Steve? Give your name and address and?
I think I remember the procedure. Thank you, Mayor Council. My name is Steve Aman, A-H-M-A-N-N, 626 Second Street Southwest, Wilmer, Minnesota. Been a resident since 1974. I'm here tonight alone with my wife Heidi. As a point of interest for the construction of Eighteenth Street's reconstruction mill and overlay of Eighteenth Street Southeast, which borders property that we own called Genesis Edition. We've owned the land for approximately 18 years, and we are currently in negotiation with a potential developer. One issue we have with the development of this project is the issue that it's dead-ended. There's a six-inch water line that runs up to Eighteenth, to the end to the north side of Eighteenth Street Southeast. That was put in approximately 35, 38 years ago. According to the previous Planning and Development Director, he was requiring me, when I met with him approximately a year ago, to put in an eight-inch water line to meet current municipal utilities code on water flow capacity for fire protection for the homes, which we can, I'm sure all agree, is a very important issue. Currently, we're talking about affordable housing in the city of Wilmer. The additional cost to put in an eight-inch water line is considerable, and it would also add to the development cost for future development of all the future homes in the area, which Genesis Edition was plotted originally back 10, 11 years ago, and it was gonna have a total of 14 units. So what we're asking is that you consider putting in an eight-inch water line in front of, in parallel to the West Central Community Health, which is housing, which is, borders the east side of Eighteenth Street Southeast. Currently, there is a fire hydrant and storm sewer, and everything is brought up to the Genesis Edition property. I believe at the time that it was constructed, that they were intending that it was going to be continued on through the, the, the landowner who owned the property, which was Merlin K. McLean, who I purchased it from. And right now, we have a shortage of housing in the community. I would like to develop this in my lifespan and sell the property or develop it to single-family home, homes that are affordable housing. So if this project, the eight-inch water line, isn't put in, it makes the land undivisible. And I understand that aging infrastructure needs to be replaced, and now would be the time to do it before we mill and overlay, have to tear it all up again and put in a new eight-inch water line. Thank you. Also, I sent a letter to a city administrator, and you should be getting a copy of that soon, which kind of summarizes what I just spoke of. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. Any questions? Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So how many acres of land do you have there?
3.25.
3.25.
Almost three and a half. There were, originally, that land was zoned agricultural when, I'm trying to remember the man's name. Anyway, worked at the post office. They, they had the land there, and it was, and we, at the time, in the city council, turned that land, rather than assessing them, the Nineteenth Street Improvement Project that was brought through with Larry Rice and Boulder on that development, we turned that land into agricultural credit. So they didn't have to pay the assessments, and the assessments were defraied. Since then, after I purchased the property, that assessment policy for agricultural went nil. So the, I paid the full assessments on Nineteenth Street Southeast for the twin homes that I did develop in that property. Hope that answers your question.
I think it was Glenn Shannon.
It was Glenn Shannon, that's correct. Good memory, Rick. Thank you.
Jared, did you have any questions for Mr. Aman?
Thanks, Mayor. I am familiar with the Genesis Edition. It's a development that's been discussed a couple times in the recent past, and in collaboration with Wilmer Municipal Utilities, what is ultimately required there is that a water connection be made from Lakeland Drive and connected to the existing water main in Eighteenth. Certainly can, can have another conversation with Wilmer Municipal Utilities about the existing six-inch in the project area that is proposed for the mill and overlay. However, we did have a lengthy discussion about all the areas identified in the PER and the condition and age of the water main. And they, during the report preparation process, felt that it was of adequate capacity and material to last another 20 to 30 years, whatever life expectancy we would get out of a mill and overlay. So that conversation was had. I'd be happy to have that with Mr. Neer and Mr. Herron again.
Okay.
All right.
Rick?
Don't walk away yet, Jared. So he's got to deal with the MUC and the Planning Department then?
For his development.
Yeah.
Yes.
Who override? Who overrides who? If the utility says six inches, fine. But planning says eight, and the fighter chief says six.
Yeah, I think the confusion where it might be setting in is there needs to be a water main extended from Lakeland Drive and looped through the development into the existing water main, whether it's six or eight in that street. That's the requirement. It's not that the water main in 18th has to be eight inches. It's that an eight-inch water main has to be extended from Lakeland over to that point. That's the requirement.
So how do you get it in there, then, if it's landlocked, other than the entrance from the south?
I believe the property owner's been pursuing easements. Because there's an existing six-foot drainage and utility easement on there. However, we all know that that's not adequate to get an eight-inch water main in. So additional easement would be required for that.
Any suggestions?
About acquiring an easement? No.
Water tower? Can you build a water tower?
I don't think they're interested in that.
All right, any other questions? All right, does anybody else want to speak? If not, I'll close the hearing and bring it up to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one letter to add. This letter is from Margine Landon. Her address is 2119 19th Avenue Southwest here in Wilmer. It says, "To the Wilmer City Council, in regards to street improvements in Wilmer where I have property. Today, I received a letter from you regarding assessments on several streets in our community, which included my property. Recently, I was watching the council meeting on TV regarding assessments other homeowners in 2023 had in our city. Most of them shared their concerns about the expense. I heard a statement made at the meeting that the city does not want to inflict assessments more than one time in a 20-year period on a homeowner. I'm looking, in looking at my records, I see I paid $6,525 in the year of 2019 for assessments on my property. In the year of 2024, when these roads have been completed and the assessments are due, it will be only five years between the two assessments I'm expected to pay. Thank you for reviewing this for me. Margine Landon, 2119 19th Avenue Southwest, Wilmer, Minnesota."
Mayor Council, I believe the property owner is referring to the 19th Avenue Trail. All properties adjacent to any of the projects included in the preliminary engineering report were notified of the, of the improvement hearing. It wasn't specifically an assessment notice. It was definitely an improvement hearing notice. But the, the trail along 19th is not currently planned to be assessed to the property owners as previous trail projects have not been.
Thank you, Jared.
So she doesn't need to worry about being assessed, anything?
No, it's simply it's a trail.
Disruption on the yard.
Project, yes, within the cities right, or within the right of way.
So right now, the assessment percentage with these numbers, is it 20 to 22%?
Very close.
That's what we paid this year, 2023, was 21.
So I talked to Joanna Schrup today at Midwest, and she said they would like to request that we hold off on the streets at Midwest until 2025, so they can budget for that.
Leslie?
I was going to say, you do have my recommendation in the council packet, and that is not one of the recommendations for 2024 street and project.
Audrey, did you have a question?
It was regarding our ability to do all of them. And that's, I think, what we're going to talk about.
That's, that's why I created the memo to the council on what we felt should be done for 2024. And that project was the, the large mill and overlay project of five, over $5 million was to be pushed off to 2025.
Questions or comments from the council? Anybody else want to speak from the? All right, I believe I closed the hearing anyway. The hearing will, they have to be continued because we need seven affirmative votes and we're short two council votes tonight.
So council, if you would like to pick a date and time just to extend this hearing, that would be what would need to be done now? Because we need a supermajority vote on street improvements. And we can't do that tonight with two council members missing.
And what lead time do you need on that? Could we?
We don't.
Okay.
You could do it tomorrow if you wanted to. Because it's just a continuation of this meeting, and this meeting was posted.
Could we move it to the 28th, since we have the work session scheduled?
We can. Yeah.
Make a motion to that effect?
We can do that.
I'll make a motion to move that to the 28th.
Second?
At 5:30.
Yep.
We got a motion and a second to continue to the 28th.
Just a question, then. Are we going to do part of the meeting as a city council meeting and part of it as a work session?
That's right, because we can't vote on?
We would only do, it doesn't matter. I mean, we can, because it's just a special meeting. And so we'd have the, this hearing right away at the beginning. And then after that is your work session. So, and it doesn't matter if it's this, they're all council meetings, so it doesn't matter between the differential.
Right, but we have a practice of not voting at the work session.
Right, I understand. We'll make it a special council meeting.
Yes, sir.
I'm just seeking understanding. Is the, is the public hearing closed and we're continuing the topic? Or is the public hearing, will that be reopened?
No, you're continuing, you're continuing your discussion on the public hearing. You're closing the public hearing tonight, but you're continuing that discussion till next week.
Thank you.
And to take action. Does that make sense?
Yep. Anybody else? All right, vote on the motion.
Hold on. Okay, Councilmember Davis, you want to do a voice vote?
Aye.
That motion carries six ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Council.
Okay, Engineering Services for 2024 Street Improvement Projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item that you have before you tonight is a resolution awarding the engineering design and construction services for the 2024 street improvement projects. These services would include all the design phases, bidding, construction services, project management, and project closeouts for the 2024 street projects that we just discussed. I apologize, my initial council request has the full amount of what Jared just spoke of, the 20 million, north of 20 million in total projects for a engineering fee of roughly 2.7 million. But as Administrator Valiant alluded to, the, the memo of what staff recommendation for projects for next year, what staff recommends going forward with is projects totaling $11,752,800. And the hearing cost for that lower number would be $1,827,863, a reduction of roughly $860,000. So the staff recommendation is to go with the lower, the lower amount cut back on our project amount for next year. And Administrator, you can jump in if I've missed anything.
No, you did very well.
And I will stand for any questions.
Audrey?
Just, just a question. I thought we were still going to go ahead so that the projects were engineered, even if we weren't going to do them. This differs from that, then, right?
So, so even with this lower amount, the design phase will still be done for all projects so that we have it at the ready, that we can do it. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that before. But it will still, it will still include design of all the projects that, that Jared spoke of.
Any other questions?
Tophy needs some clarification on this, too. This is, so these costs are actually going to be between 2024 and 2025. So they're not all going to be in 2024.
Want a motion?
First, we need someone to motion.
I'll make a motion to award the 2024, we're going to include then 2025, street improvement projects, engineering, design, and construction-related services to Bolt and Mick, in the amount of $2 million.
Nope, $1 million.
$1 million, that other amount.
Yes, 827, 863.
As long as you have it in the motion. Okay.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Other questions? Roll call.
That motion carries eight, six ayes, zero nays.
All right, community pride announcements? Sarah and Ben?
How about? Oh, we got some.
I'm sorry.
So last week, we got to host the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities here in Wilmer. And we had a tour around our city that Aaron Bachman did, and then Leslie Valiant did one. And I was so impressed. I know what's in our city, and it was a great tour. And I had people behind me. I was eavesdropping. And I could hear them saying, they have a lot of really good stuff going on here. And I just felt so proud of our city. And it's great to live here.
I, I share that. We had a like tour of the city when Economic Development, what was the name of it?
Edom. It was called On the Road, Economic Development Association of Minnesota.
And we, we made a tour. I think it was the same tour you were on. And I, I, too, was very impressed by our city and what we're, very proud. People were saying to me, boy, they got a lot going on here. Julie?
I'll just throw in the plug for the lights out at Robins Island, celebrate the lights. Usually, they are the, is it Thanksgiving evening? Or when are they going to open?
Thanksgiving evening.
Thanksgiving evening, to drive through and see the lights.
Justin?
I just want to say that we had a great parade. The holidays parade on Saturday was phenomenal. Plenty of activities, great turnout. It was fun to see downtown filled with so many people. It was a great start to the holiday season.
Audrey?
Thank you.
I count on you.
You do? I usually participate in this part. I just wanted to say a, a thank you to both staff and council members for attending the Coalition's Fall Conference that we had the opportunity to host here in Wilmer. And hopefully, we'll have some other opportunities to do that. But it was great to have as many council members. The mayor did the welcome, and it was, it was great. I had lots of comments, positive comments about the location and the food and the participation along with the tour. And so there were lots of time and energy put in, both by the CVB and by our staff in planning those things. And so I just want to say thank you. And I think we can have an opportunity to shine again sometime by hosting another conference or convention.
Thank you. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
They're adjourned.